We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, Smiley.
Here.
Start.
Here.
The order here. Number four, discussion and review with Jeremy Vella regarding the Industrial Economic Development Authority. Board is yours, Mr..
Hello. I, uh... I'm here. Main reason is to secure the thirty-five thousand that we get annually from the county commissioners. And I went on ahead and what I do is a pledge, right? Usually it's in November, but the way it kind of worked for us, um, this timeframe, um, usually, I think August is when we get the check. We go out with the check that's cut to us. Uh, and so it's kind of like the last portion of our budget. Our fiscal year goes from September first to August thirty-first. But, uh, what I have here is the letter that I generally give out to what we've been doing and what we are doing. And then, uh, with that also, some T-Mobile. I added some additional stuff, uh, just at the bottom of what I've been working on and what I've been doing. And where, uh, the funds actually, you know, what they're used for is primarily it's the administration of its operations. So, uh, the Woods County, uh, the commissioners, uh, that's basically our anchor, if you will. Um, and then, uh, with that support, it usually helps in trying to raise additional funding. Uh, with what I've been working on, uh, these last, actually, couple of years, the ARPA and PREP funds that we received, I was able to secure fifteen million through ARPA and five million through PREP. Uh, the ARPA funds go solely to water and sewage to, uh, help us in creating a new industrial park. And so, uh, the PREP funds had actually, um, we secured a piece of land that we were bringing that to. But with what's being done and, um, you know, there's more details about it. But, uh, we're working with the city of Alba to, uh, uh, helping getting wells established and, and to improve water capacity there in order to bring water to the new industrial park. On top of other things that have done, last year I secured a hundred thousand dollars through USDA to create a revolving loan fund. And we actually have two that are now, uh, two borrowers for the loan fund. So one was a new business that was in Winoka. That's the restaurant that is there, the station. And the, uh, other one is a, an expansion to an existing business, an auto repair, uh, that's here in Alba.
That was a loan?
Yeah, so with USDA, um, I stated I wanted to do a revolving loan fund. The main reason why this actually happened is when I originally started my journey with, uh, with Cody Williams and the Albeir Company, uh, we were getting started. He said, "Is there anything out there for, uh, you know, a new business?" Which really there isn't unless we created ourselves. So I went to USDA and I said, "I would like to have a revolving loan fund, but, uh, it needs to be for a lower interest rate that, uh, new businesses may not be able to take advantage of." Uh, they were able to do that. So we got a hundred thousand dollars. We actually got ninety-nine thousand, nine-hundred ninety-nine because if you are under one dollar from that six digit, it saves you from twice as much paperwork.
We understand.
Yeah. But, uh, with that, so far, we have two, um, that have taken advantage of that. We have others that are asking, uh, and in this particular case, it could be existing, it can be new. But I do like the opportunity that's there for the new businesses. So if a Cody Williams again comes along and needs a certain piece of equipment to make his business succeed, we can be there and support it. The revolving loan, if you are not aware of how it really works is we get money out. As money starts coming back in, we give another loan out to somebody else. So it could be something from, uh, repairs on an air conditioning unit for a well-established business, all the way up to, um, a vehicle to help support another business. So, and that is actually what the repair shop had done. Uh, so that's...
Now, is there a set, like structured payments that's due back at that? Or is it just as he gets it going?
Yeah. Um, it is on, uh, what we like to do to, especially if they're a new business, we do an interest only for the first six months.
I bet you...
Uh, and with that, they get business consultations and that comes from myself. And actually, hey, with the technology center, we both offer our services to kind of help them and get them going in the right path. After that six months, they'll start paying the interest and the principal back. And, uh, as that continues, in both of these cases, they're five-year months. So we give them, where it's doable for them.
Right.
Now, you take a chance when it comes to, uh, a new business, obviously.
Oh, for sure.
Especially in a restaurant situation. Uh, I gathered all the data for them to kind of, um, prove their work with that of why it should be successful as long as they're, they're doing that properly. Uh, and the business consultations, they're very welcome too. Um, they take our advice. Uh, I've visited with them the last two months. I'll be visiting again here within the next week. We'll probably go over, um, now that they've established themselves for a couple of months, we'll go over their numbers, see where we can improve a lot of things. I also help, um, with part of my background, I helped design their venue. So, um, some of the services where they don't have to spend so much money on, maybe their marketing pieces or PR, we can tell them what that is and it's free for them to utilize. Other things that I'd just like to point out, uh, yeah, we have, uh, a lot of business consultations that I help, mainly with business plans, um, data gathering to kind of let them see if they are new, if their business is potential, if it has, um, the consumer spending opportunities that are there. Uh, partnered with a lot of other groups. We had become the first county to enter the Main Street program. Now, prior to this, I was with the Oklahoma Department of Commerce for seventeen years. I had established a site-ready program that they have. And then I moved on to Main Streets, now it's our economic developer. So when I saw an opportunity to possibly get all of the county in there where they can take advantage of it more. So someone like Freedom wouldn't be able to go directly into the Main Street program. And, uh, Winoka probably would have taken a little bit, uh, extra steps. Actually, surprisingly, I'm in the middle of helping Winoka, they want to move to the next tier. So they're looking to, they're already establishing board and they've established a, uh, there's a four-point system with Main Streets. And so those committees are being developed right now with Winoka. And, uh, we're looking into that 501(c)(3) status for the nonprofit. Uh, but because we entered the Main Street program, even at the network level where we are at, uh, it opened up opportunities for grants. And, uh, the IQC was a grant that was awarded to Winoka. And then also in Winoka, one of the businesses was able to do the American Express grant and they received some funds there too, which is good. So we just keep looking for these things. I'm trying, it's a little difficult to get the T-Mobile grant, but I'm working with Freedom because there's a project. We'd like to do, uh, more of a weight finding or visual look. So when you drive past Freedom, you're like, "Oh, there's a town here. We'd like to stop and see what, what it has to offer." And so that's something, that's our new initiative that we've been working on. Uh, I myself, with my job, I mean, I wear a lot of different hats. I'm the only one that's in my office. So I do the Lieutenant Governor's Turkey Hunts. Uh, we do a, uh, a donor appreciation. Uh, this last time we did a make server, it was at the Albeir Company. Because we like to promote, if we can, the new businesses that are around. Uh, but, uh, I'm their accountant, I'm the event planner, I'm a business consultant. We have three buildings, so I also handle, uh, kind of landlord responsibilities and duties. And then, um, with the revolving loan fund, uh, the kind of enters the world of banking and the lender process, amortization and all this fun stuff. You know, it keeps you on your toes, that's for sure.
Did you write our ARPA grant that we received in twenty...
I, the only one that I wrote was for the one that was awarded by...
The rail park?
Yeah, the fifteen million and the five million PREP, those are those two.
And who's on the economic development board?
Uh, okay, so we have an industrial development authority and then the economic development committee. I report to the economic development committee. That has both Hannahford, it has Susan Bradford, it has, um, Jack Stats, it has Kale Weaver, it has Kay Decker, it has David Hamon. Well, he's on it still until...
Until we... He resigned here effectively at the end of March.
Yeah. Well, and that would be a decision, uh, generally, um, in our bylaws.
If you got, you've got people on there that's not capable of serving or...
Yep.
And what... You guys take care of that or do we need to?
What would happen is, uh, we'd like to have a county commissioner that is on there. Um, and if he is not able to, uh, generally, we open it up to that person to state who they feel would be good to follow, uh, or replace them. If not, then it would be the committee's responsibility to determine, um, who it would be. But with that suggestion, it would be that a county commissioner would be the one who replaced him.
Is there anybody else I have or you have to say?
Oh, um, let's see, uh, Jeremy Eaton, he's our chair. And is that seven? Do we have seven there?
Yes.
Okay, good. We got them all. And then do I have to bend up the order either?
Now, who's the industrial board?
The industrial...
Am I quick to ask or am I asking you this?
No. Um, the industrial authority is, uh, Randy McMurphy, it's Bob Baker, Melissa Fisher, Stan Klein, and Brody Bush. And then I also am the point of contact for the Avar day authority as well.
Now, what do we hope to accomplish out there with the fifteen million dollar grant for the water?
Well, um, the main part is to get that land where it's a site-ready situation, shovel-ready. So that's recruitment that we're looking at. We already, um, have been in talks with a couple of different, not just consultants, but businesses. I've actually been in talks with a transloading, uh, company which we brought, uh, in to kind of, uh, discuss the actual old piece of land that we have. That old piece of land is certified, um, VNSF. So it's, uh, it's certified by them, uh, the rail.
The one that's at Avar?
The one that's at Avar right now, correct.
The rock people? Are they, uh...
It's pretty dormant with the rock area.
Were they just holding on to that to keep this, but just from getting other people in there or...
No, I think, um, it's more of a, just, there's no real action that's going on. But there would have to be conversations if we were to have somebody else come to that area.
I think it's no lease that's... That's a conversation we ought to...
There is no lease that's, uh, there anymore. That ran out in February.
Our area, the lease ran out in February.
Yeah, it's like on a month, a month.
So there's some... We could call them...
From my understanding...
We could call another outfit and bring Ralph in there, but...
That's, we would have to double check, but from my understanding, that's where we're at. Stan was actually going to be here, um, today if he wasn't able to make it, but...
Well, I'll be at that building if that's...
That'd be great to, that'd be great to talk.
You know, thirty-eight acres of the Winoka rail park.
Okay.
Plus we own... I don't have this broken down. I think it's like thirty-eight lots in Avar. We need to get something with that.
Yeah. Well, the, I'm gonna be honest, the land that is in Avar that is there, uh, the engineering survey that was done, uh, right before I came in, basically said, "In order for you to get to a shovel-ready situation where you're doing any sort of manufacturing recruitment, uh, it's seventy million dollars." And that was four years ago that that was stated as needed. When I got the top grant that was through Department of Commerce, which is, uh, third-party consultants, they were out of South Carolina. They came and they visited the area. They said, um, you know, what the issues were for that particular rail park authority, which at that time, we had, we have to shift gears of what can actually go on that particular plant. Storage of sorts, warehouse possibilities there. Manufacturing's just not going to be even feasible. The, the electric, the gas is fine. It's that water, it's that sewer. And seventy million to get it to a shovel-ready for anybody to be attracted. So the South Carolina people came and said, um, you know, "This is what we're seeing." They did, you know, their study. We asked the question of what can we do? Um, and they basically said, "Get another piece of land." So what do we do? We get another piece of land. And that's what we're developing now. So that is, uh, in hopes by the end of 2026 because that's when the ARPA funds run out or that's when they need to be used by. Right now, uh, we're in the free bid. And just last week, we had the meeting with, uh, all the possible contractors in that development. So, uh, by the next Avar meeting, uh, any bids that are submitted will be opening. It's the third, third Tuesday. I'm not sure what day that is.
So that's gonna be the...
Twenty-second? Is that, no, the...
Eighteenth, this one.
Good. What are you hoping, what are you hoping for there in all that? Perfect world?
Seventeenth. I just said seventeenth.
Perfect world would be, um, the start of some sort of manufacturing business, but not one that is so big that...
But not at Avar.
Not at the rail park itself. The rail park that we have now, that is the certified VNSF, what I would like for that to be to complement the new one. With that said, transloading is still not out of the question. It's just the number of cars that have to pass through is what's the importance there. So, transloading opportunity could be there. Yeah, there's other routes that we can look at. Could we possibly get the whole area as a whole, a foreign trade zone where you can make that more attractive to other types of businesses where you can avoid a tariff situation? Um, I'm looking into that right now as well. So we're trying to get something that has it right now though. If, like, for example, South Carolina, they're, they're site consultants. So if this four to five hundred company comes to them and says, "We're looking for this spot." That is not going to be a spot they would even have on their radar. They usually, they start with one hundred and after one day, they dwindle that down to three. And so it's really just that it's like you start at the pyramid, but it's an upside-down pyramid that just goes and...
It'll funnel to Avar.
It will not funnel to Avar. Now, like you were saying though...
Maybe some kind of, uh, wrecking, just, uh, what am I trying to say?
I don't know.
Dismantling hazardous ways, something along them lines?
So as you...
Where we could maybe break something down?
That is also in conversations right now. So Avar and, you know, there's, there's so much that we can talk about, obviously. Um, we've, we've talked with consultants and we've been in conversations with consultants, but is that, um, something that's doable? Is it, um, an opportunity? Recycling or a storage facility of sorts? Um, but we're in the, just the beginning stages, the talking stages of that. And so that, that's really not something that we, um, that we got into too deep. But, uh, we do have...
I mean, I, I can't think of anything what that place would be good for besides some kind of hazardous waste recycling.
Well, for me, personally, and...
No people, no water.
And Savage is the transloading company that we're in conversation with. Ideally, I think that would be great. It's just, you know, an area. So maybe in the future, CarGill decides to branch out a little bit more. Opportunity for them to use transloading station. That's what I would love to see for that area because it has that opportunity. What do you do with the other part of the land? Because there's, you know, well, over three hundred acres that are out there. My other thoughts would be seeing, you know, with what we have going on now with solar, seeing the opportunities with wind. We've been in conversations with, uh, Invenergy. Nextera was one of our guests that we had at the Lieutenant Governor's Turkey Hunts. Just keep those conversations open at least. Um, the ideal part right now though, or in first priority, is the new industrial park. Getting that there and having this other piece of land complement that. That's what we would like for that to possibly attract something. And where I was going also when talking, what, you know, manufacturing would be what we'd love to have. But we, you, at least not at the start. You don't want something that's going to be a hundred employees because that's going to take all the employees from all of our other groups. We want something that's going to be, um, something that our community can handle and, um, also be able to build upon increasing housing and increasing the workforce and making this area more attractive. So the students at the university, when they graduate, perhaps they stay here and there's a business that's there for them. But, um, it would be fun. It'd be great if, you know, there was a, a business to come in with a hundred employees if they're bringing in the hundred employees. We don't want to see them take away from our other businesses that are here that are existing right now.
Right.
Any more questions for Jeremy, John, Damon? Even more than answering my question. I make a motion we proceed to pay the thirty-five thousand to economic development.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks for explaining all this.
Yeah. And if you ever, I'm, I'm open, uh...
I want to find out more about that rock one that you're...
I think that would be, yeah, let's, let's see what we can do.
We're looking for you to work on that.
Our rock prices are so high.
It's another point we can't, we can't get rock in here.
So...
Well, we came because of Martin Marietta. We could before, but not now.
And Shelley, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we were in the conversation, the whole Martin Marietta, we did realize that that contract was, was up, didn't we? Wasn't it in January or February? To where it was like where we had...
That way they can leave...
Because it's like really dormant, from my understanding.
They, yeah, in fact, we've been kind of surprised that we're still...
I mean, there's, there's a pile of rock out there. There aren't a lot. Most of it went from out there to, they hauled it out here on this bit.
But that's something, I think that's something we've put on the agenda. Uh, you know, the, the big thing for the next meeting is obviously going to be bids, but I mean, it could be something that we add to it.
And the good thing is they're still paying us thirty-two hundred dollars a month.
Right.
Martin Marietta.
Well, that makes me think they, they still got a contract.
Well, there's a supplier, so it's going, it's going a month.
For a living and was as big as Martin Marietta, I would pay you thirty-two hundred dollars a month so somebody else wouldn't come in and, and I think that's what's going on.
We can fix that.
That's what I'm asking.
That's where, that's where I think, that was something that we had a conversation of, um, because I did have a stipulation of no competitors.
I want to say twenty-five years.
Yeah, but...
And don't do something like that on your new rail park.
Oh, no.
Don't make no contract...
I wasn't around whenever that conversation was happening. So, yeah, no, I agree with you a hundred percent. If, and if you definitely know someone, I think we would...
If it is the issue...
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it.
We could easily... We could have a negotiation or something like that and try to get Martin.
Because I do want to have that.
But, you know, that's again, I, I'm their point of contact, so I bring it to the board and I will bring up this as an opportunity. Yes. And they'll probably ask for more information. So, you know, if you've got that information prior to that meeting, I'd be happy to give them all the information they need. And then they'll be, just send me, I, I always say, the best way for me, send me an email. If you keep that email unopened, that means I've got it, I got something I've got to do. And when I look at the email and pretty quick about that, I make sure that, um, we get it at least discussed and we have it on the table. This is my Main Street week. This is where I got all that. But I always get something else that's thrown my way, but I'm happy to.
Thanks for your time. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
Yeah, good.
Same to you.
Number five, approval of warrants and claims.
I'm in.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, approval of minutes, the last meeting regular, June second, 2025.
I like that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discussion of possible action regarding going out for bids on the skid unit for a green leaf from the Winoka Friday purchase. And I make a motion we do that. And let me explain. John has worked on this. We can't get straight answers on the state contract. Ethan and I called this morning trying to get answers on the state contract. We still can't. We've got to go out for bid. And I make a motion to go out for bids on the skid units, one with the...
It's called the deluxe.
The deluxe and one without the deluxe.
Yeah, one's standard skid unit and one's a deluxe.
One with the top unit and one without.
Yeah.
Does all that make sense?
Yeah.
One's bottom ground control, one's top control.
Now, they are still working on the state contract part. So if we get the state contract, we don't have to accept these bids. We can just go with state.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'm about that far from it.
Sick of it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight, approved, disproved monthly reports to the following assessor, health department, county clerk, treasurer, court clerk, sheriff, and legislature.
I think they're all there.
Wow. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, central purchases, Avar.
Supposed to be working that out this morning sometime, about the same time we're working this out.
Thank you.
I told her that, didn't I? I thought she was going to bring something else.
I'll make preparations. That's next.
You on that? Number nine, discussion of possible action regarding monthly appropriation.
Up, down, what are they?
That's next.
Up, well...
It's like this cheese house or something.
Yeah. Is this our, is this our...
Saying our gym? What is this?
This is...
It's a gym.
It's maze.
Maze.
We're always a month behind.
So we'll have another one and then we'll start a new year?
Right. The other one though will just be rolled into this year's, you know, what's, what you're finishing with this year. And so we don't have these, yes, right there. We don't have these signed. I mean...
Did you say that?
But I can, um, but I can let you guys know what it is.
Thank you.
What that mound is, next one.
Got a motion in a second.
Hopefully we'll...
Aye.
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to get our, our stuff straightened out.
Oh, no, no, not there. Just up there, at the top, at the red.
I'll agree.
I'll go with these, but next year I'd like to get ours done right. As far as pay for road miles, whatnot. I know you guys probably don't wanna hear that, but...
Did you say something?
Yeah, we're gonna discuss it every time.
Let's do check those. We got a sound?
You made a motion, Damian, seconded it.
All seconded.
We should have a sound before you...
No, you guys don't sign those.
We don't sign, why?
You don't sign those? Yeah. The X-size board signs them.
X-size, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Give it one more time.
Yeah.
Number ten, discussion possible action regarding that OEDA roof affidavit conclusion cap and authority department grant number WD-25-2.
And you signed it, right there. Yeah, they got everything done on there.
Got their equipment completed.
Mm-hmm.
How many of them do we have left after?
Yeah, about six or seven.
Six or seven.
Mm-hmm. I need motion on that one.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Get it there.
Yep.
Number eleven, discussion possible action regarding the Wyndham and Senior Cities project.
Seemed to be coming right along, um, they, they said they were gonna get the roof on pretty quick, well, I mean, it hailed again, but I don't know when they're gonna do it, but, I mean, they're making progress inside, they, they look like they're gonna be done in a month.
Did they find out about the insurance on the roof?
Um, yeah, they're gonna do it, uh, but, I don't know, that's their deal, I didn't get too far into their weeds.
Any questions? Number twelve, discussion possible action regarding the Alvin City project.
Really no change from last week, they did get the foundation for, hope the farmers can get, break enough on the weather, then they get there to do what they need to do, get concrete guys back, get a path here.
Okay, number thirteen, new business, not do have new business, immediate disaster emergency proclamation.
Okay.
What do we need to do?
Read that and...
Yeah.
We'll sign it.
Whereas on June sixth through the eighth, 2025, Woods County, Oklahoma experienced severe weather with significant flooding causing considerable damage to public and private properties, and whereas immediately...
Go ahead.
That's it. Whereas immediate attention is required to protect public health, reduce further damage, ensure public safety, and render emergency relief, and whereas we, the Board of County Commissioners of Woods County, Oklahoma, do find that the aforementioned conditions constitute a threat to safety and welfare of the county and create an emergency disaster situation within the meaning that section 683.3 Oklahoma Emergency Management Act of 2003 is amended. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, acting under the power vested in us to hereby declare Woods County to be a disaster area, titled to aid, relief, and assistance, and do hereby direct and implement implementation of the county emergency operation plan, a witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and seal this instrument on the ninth day of June in the year of our Lord, 2025, Woods County.
I'll make that motion here.
Good grief.
I'll say, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, does that?
Do you send that to the governor or something?
He approves it?
Yep.
Or denies it?
Even though...
Um, and then that opens the door for us to buy timber on the outside of the ground?
No, so we'll, so we'll have to snuff that into the state. And that's just the first step, again, looking to see if we qualify.
We'll go wait to see if we're qualified before we order, order in and that stuff?
We'll go in and, and, and put it there and see if they'll put it, uh, from the downtown that looked at, it looks like we've met over the threshold for our county, but depending on how they want to gather the incidents throughout the last month or so, they have to look and see if it'll qualify statewide, as being a statewide threshold if they comply for a presidential...
Some of the, some of the waters receded, some of what we looked at that was flooded, that, uh, you can see what's actually damaged now with the water. Yeah, we closed an additional four miles, so...
Any other new business questions?
Yeah, I'd like to, I don't know if I need to go through the process, but I'd like to go off the bids for a hundred, uh, length to the park stuff in, three-sided, hundred-foot length to sixteen-foot eaves. Do I need to put that on the agenda, or can I bring that up under the...
Yeah, you can bring it with other new business, so just get with, um, get specs to Ashley, her lead is in now.
Does it have to be today?
This is the copy. I gave you the original.
Awesome.
I think that was the intent.
I'll just make it true.
Thank you, Ethan.
Yeah.
Appreciate you doing this weekend, helping out.
Yep.
You better...
Do you want this to be today?
Does that just mean it's not the respect you're...
No. No, whenever...
I mean, really, it's pretty simple.
Whenever you give her the specs...
Hundred-foot, three-sided, I've had a building, maybe not that long.
Yeah, just get her the specs and she can get it in the, she could probably get it in the newspaper for Friday.
Yeah.
And then, um, or get it in, yeah, so for Friday would work out good, and then we could open them, but then, before the end of the month, you could get a month, probably on the twenty-fifth, when we are meeting on the twenty-fifth. Yeah.
Any other new business?
Uh, I don't think, I don't have anything.
Number fourteen, approve and disprove purchase orders. I'll make a motion we approve those.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number fifteen, motion to recess and reconvene at the Alve Arena. My understanding is OSU tradition has Lulu's out here waiting on us with brownies and stuff. Dr. E, we're in charge of that.
That's right, that is right.
Is that incorrect?
Oh, you're right. We'll make it happen, we will make it happen.
I'm afraid the sheriff's opposite took on the, yeah, they're right.
Sheriff's, uh, how it is. Thank you. Ava's here, Ava's with, uh, Ross. The sheet I gave to you, the main building, and then you'd have the stall barn and the other, the other warm-up room, you can see where they've kinda started to try to dig the foot in there, so that's, those are the two buildings there that aren't up yet. Yeah, yeah. South, south.
Yeah, you're looking at, we're standing about right here. Yep, there will be an entrance there, and then an entrance about right here with a trailer.
Oh, okay.
And then there will be an RV entrance back there.
Go ahead.
Ah, boy, this one. Over this, put insulation in, it'll be black as well, so hide everything, white's dropped out. You can look up and you'll be blinded when you see it.
As far as finishes, this one here will be the more, yeah, well, this is the especially space that we call, off-touch face, wet touch, and floor. Of course, an upscale, but with nicer amenities in there. And then after you move to the west, you have the lower amenities, and then finally the down.
Okay.
Stuff like that, so you have to walk there over here. This stall, open, looking the same power, but it has, it'll be the same white color as here.
It looks, make the safe air condition, it's going to have two of the, two of the normal summer curtains, not just live on, but all of it. So, this would be an area, both like used space, and what you can maybe even add, you can, uh, have a cocktail, spring and fall, it'll be, it'll set up, uh, maybe, maybe get the pole in there, maybe, wash that, cause what you see there is lost access to the air, whatever, to get the, to get the air to go. This would be for, uh, extra space, not, not what they talk more. Ceiling will be open to the deck with this, with back insulation. As you can see, an overhead door that runs, and link that you could go over to the...
There's a IT room, maybe right in here, above the open back.
And back a little farther.
James gonna drive out. Just off in that ditch back there, remember?